This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, June the 6th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Travis Johnson, Pathway Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. And I'd like to say before I do pray, thank you, uh, to your city council, to the president of the council, to everyone that's here, Mayor Stimson, to all of the leaders that we have that serve. It's a really incredible city. I do tell people, I want you to get to heaven. Really do. But if you don't get to heaven, at least get to Mobile. Pretty incredible place. Please, let's pray. Dear Father, as we open this session, I acknowledge you as Creator and Sustainer of every single life. Every good and perfect gift we have. Everything that we've ever received comes from you. You're our source and we trust you. And I stand today in this room to say thank you. Everything that we have is a stewardship. And you call us to care for what you've given us with intentionality, passion, and effectiveness. Jesus, you tell us that we should be fruitful with what we have and what we're trusted with. And while the free gift of salvation is available through our son, Jesus, through your son, Jesus, uh, you tell us that we will also be judged based on what we do with what we have. And so I pray that all we do with all that we have honors you, our Father, Creator, Sustainer, and our Redeemer. Lord, I approach you today praying for our city council, for our counselors, Counselor Penn, Counselor Carroll, Counselor Small, Counselor Reynolds, Counselor Dawes, Counselor Gregory. I pray that you administer to them. I pray this with the mindset of the Apostle Paul who urged his son in the faith, Timothy, to pray for our government leaders. He said that doing so would cause a benefit of peace, godliness, and dignity. More importantly, he said that doing so would cause people to know the truth and to be safe. So, Lord, save us. Turn our hearts to you. The God who became flesh and dwelt among us, who healed the sick, the blind, who touched the untouchable, who associated with the poor and the prosperous, who loved the unlovable, who openly ate with sinners, who spared the religious elite embarrassment and allowed them to meet with him under the cover of night. The God who ministered to the woman caught in sexual immorality and cared for her and told her to go and sin no more. Lord, I pray that we would turn our hearts to you, who raised the dead and who showed a better way. And Lord, for all that you did, your son was put on trial, beaten, crucified, and buried. That didn't stop him. He was resurrected. He appeared to more than 500 witnesses. He ascended. He now sits at your right hand. And he's making intercession for us even right now, in this moment, for all of us in this place. Father, as your son intercedes for us today, I pray that you will minister to our city, these counselors, and all the leaders and public servants of the city of Mobile. There are leaders who have been instituted by you with serious responsibility. Responsibility for governance, public safety, taxation, facilitating business, protecting our children. And so, Lord, on this point, I pause and especially pray for the protection of the children of Mobile who are inundated and targeted by harmful agendas and social media from peers at times in our schools, at times in our public libraries, and at times in our city parks. I pray that you would put a hedge of protection around them and guard them from ideologies that have zeroed in on them and at their youngest and most innocent ages with sexualized merchandising, conversation, and interactions. Lord, give us wisdom as we consider how to best govern all of our citizens while protecting the most innocent among us. Lord, bless our leaders in this respect. And ask that you bless all the people of Mobile that we will walk under the blessing Jeremiah pronounced. "Lest are those who trust in the Lord and have made the Lord their hope and confidence; they are like trees planted along a riverbank with roots that reach deep into the water." Lord, I pray according to Psalm 33. "Let everyone stand in awe of him, for when he spoke the world began. It appeared at his command." The Lord frustrates the plans of the nations and supports all all their schemes. But the Lord's plans stand firm forever. His intentions can never be shaken. What a joy for the nation, what a joy for the city whose God is the Lord, whose people he has chosen us as his inheritance. The Lord looks down from heaven and sees the whole human race. From his throne, he observes all who live on the earth. He made their hearts so he understands everything they do. The best-equipped army cannot save a king, nor is great strength enough to save a warrior. Don't count on your warhorse to give you victory. For all his strengths, it cannot save you. But the Lord watches over those who fear him, those who rely on his unfailing love. He rescues them from death and keeps them alive in times of famine. We put our hope in the Lord. He is our help and our shield. In him our hearts rejoice, for we trust in his holy name. Let your unfailing love surround us, oh Lord, in Mobile, in the city council, in our homes. For our hope is in you alone. And I pray these things in the powerful, good name of Jesus. Amen.
Hallelujah! Hallelujah!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is the state of our nation. Our God, in his holy name, the very essence of our heart.
Brokaw, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see you all one hour. June 6th meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phone, please at this time put it on the off or the vibrated position. The off or the vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution. The ordinance appealed a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state, uh, his or her name. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item uh, must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM prior to Thursday, prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to address to the Mobile City Council must be identified and retained to the city of Mobile business. And a person who has not given a proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item to the Mobile City Council would not be allowed to do so. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell was sounded to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be none undue applause and a public outcry allowed. Now, Mr. Clerk.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. Appreciate everybody being here this morning. It's good to see you. Uh, my first remark this morning has to do with, um, just reminding you that wasn't long ago that you read somewhere that maybe Mobile was the second most dangerous city in America. Um, if you didn't read it, I'm glad you didn't see it because it was misinformation. Um, we knew when we read it that it was incorrect. Uh, it was crime statistics that had been reported, let's say, by the FBI, and they were tremendously inflated. So what had happened in 2021, we had incorporated a new program for the city of Mobile and, uh, to track these statistics, which had to tie into the state network. And then the state network ties into the national network. Well, there were two glitches in the program which tremendously elevated the amount of crime that, um, that we actually had in Mobile. So after a couple of months of work, the FBI has now corrected that information. And so we can tell you that no longer would we show up in that kind of, um, being recognized as such. I'll actually tell you this, that this year, uh, since the beginning of this year, our crime statistics on homicides, we're down 37% from last year. Our gun crimes are down 35% and robberies are down 13%. We are headed in the right direction. I hope that when someone, uh, a year from now talks about the things that are going on and what cities are doing to protect their citizens, that they'll be talking about Mobile in a very positive light because the cooperation that we and the collaboration we have with all law enforcement, uh, plus working with the MPD, plus the judicial system is, is working. So glad to be able to tell you that. Uh, on another note, earlier, uh, last, actually, it was last year in 2022, we partnered with Ransom Ministries, uh, on the Road to Work Program. The thought was, was that we would, uh, Ransom Ministries would train and employ uh, those who were homeless, trying to get them back on their feet, giving them direction and giving them an opportunity to regain possibly what they had previously lost. The idea was that we were gonna put them at work with our litter crews, picking up litter, and that we would work with them on some soft skills and other things to, and to make sure that they again could get back on their feet. So after successful pilot program, this city council unanimously agreed to expand that program. And the Road to Work is now a full-time program. And I want to show you what your support, uh, is doing in our city. So if you'll play the video, please. That is Otis Robinson.
All right, yeah, so we back here in the ditch, working in an environment where my guys are routinely. It's taken them a couple of weeks to get this far. But as you can see, when you look that way over a quarter mile, and you look that way right there, almost a quarter mile, these guys have put in a lot of work over the last week and a half, almost two weeks, it takes them to do all this. But before my crew got here two weeks ago, you couldn't walk through here. There would have been weeds and debris, four, five, six foot tall. All the wild animals that's in the area, all the different critters that come out of a ditch. And it was restricted. So, you know, obviously, they gotta get in here and, and open up the flow so the water get through here and the communities don't flood around here. I've grown to like my job. At first, I thought it was a little difficult, but, um, it's productive. Making the community look nicer, cleaning it up. All right, so this is what we doing. This is what we do. Getting all litter, all debris. My name is Otis Robinson. I'm a Ransom Ministries graduate. Oh, it was, it was challenging. You know, 'cause I had to, like, get my mind back together, 'cause my mind was all spaced out and collecting a million thoughts at one time, coming from the streets and coming from being on drugs and coming from being homeless. It took a lot of control that I had to gain that I didn't have, a lot of self-control that I didn't have, and a lot of discipline that it took inside my mind. The stuff Mr. Robbins has been asked to do on a daily is very demanding. You ask something of Otis, he's always willing to help you with what you need. Uh, very willing to learn to operate some of our smaller equipment and stuff like that. Nah, as long as I grab a good decent beat out like this, I done look. I think it's a good deal, man, 'cause it actually, if it went for this process, I don't know where I would be, but I, I thank the Lord that I, I got led through Ransom Ministries, the Road to Work Program. For my family and my kids, I'm like a proud father to them now, you know, 'cause they see me at my lowest, you know, and, um, my family, it's a good thing I, I'm being restored. I thank God for this opportunity, man. And everything I had stated over, over this, uh, interview just now, God be the glory. Thank you.
I'll ask, uh, Otis and Charles Dent and Donna Hapich and Sandra Smith to please join me at the podium.
Um, to the council, uh, we are really grateful for Otis. Otis has gone through a program. And we don't refer to people homeless anymore. We call them people without homes. And so one of the things, Otis has gone through the program. And so we got other ones right now that the city has hired on as well, uh, so that we can continue this process. So the whole thing is providing him the wraparound services as well. Veterans Recovery Resource has been a significant part of that, so we can make sure that he got everything. Everybody will understand, his life has been restored with his family, uh, his children. He got his driver's license, everything that was behind him. Otis came to class one time, and he said, he heard me do the presentation about the end of average. And that stuck with him. And he made up his mind, he was gonna end his life being average. And so I want to thank the city. Gina, thank you for coming out and talking with us, being there. Mayor, really appreciate that. Everybody in this city, we are making a difference in Mobile, and I want to tell you guys, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. So when we started the partnership, I, I really want to go back to the beginning. And we originally were trying to do job fairs at the mission to really bring on folks. And we realized the barrier we was hitting is many people didn't have driver's license, they didn't know where their birth certificate was, they didn't know where social security card. You need all of that to start work. So partnering with Ransom allowed that relationship to help build them up to know, to get the things that they needed to be able to work, but also give them those skills. So really, at the first part of it, it's, you know, returning the call for interview. It's actually doing an actual interview. It's starting all of your new paperwork. And Dr. Dent walks them through that process to get them in the door. Once they get the training, which, uh, is what, um, we're doing with, um, Otis, is then, this is a starting board. We hope that they stay with us, but then there's other opportunities that they can do. And really, at the very basic, we ask that you come to work. Come to work on time. You come with your uniform on, and you come with a good attitude. And Otis did all of those things. And so it, it made, um, he set the path for the rest of the people that's coming behind him. So thank you, Otis.
And I do, excuse me, Counsel, I do want to recognize Donna. Uh, she's one of the case managers at Ransom, so we do have case managers there to make sure that driver's license, everything is restored and they're back in order. So they, we go to court with them, making sure everything is done so these guys can be productive citizens. I just want to tell you.
Real quick, the one thing, I, I ran into Otis, uh, when he was out in Africa Town, we were clearing Samaria, and, uh, we talked and, and, uh, he told me a little bit of his story, but he was actually up in Alaska, um, and he's a trained welder and, and was doing work up in Alaska when he kind of, when things kind of went, you know, south for him personally. And so he got back here and, uh, and wanted to start over. Um, but, you know, although he's started in some, uh, you know, basic level stuff, we really wanted to get him back to his skill in welding, which is what he's gonna do and what he's doing. Uh, but, you know, there happens to be other big businesses that are across the river that have need welders very desperately. Uh, and so, uh, I envision if, you know, he does a good year with us, that he's got a lot of bright future ahead of him in, in his career. So we're really happy to get him back on track.
Dr. Dent was telling me to get a speech together, right? I just want to thank everybody who, uh, had anything, had everything to do with the programs that I've been through. It really was a good help. It was tough, though. I just want to thank everybody. I just want to thank everybody.
I would, I would like to say, uh, to you, uh, Mr. Otis, thank you so much for sharing your testimony. Now, with just with the city council, but with the city of Mobile. Uh, many times, you know, the council and the mayor, we always say it's a great day in the city of Mobile because of different projects that we complete, uh, with, with the streets and sidewalks and et cetera. But this is a great day in Mobile because we have you as a testimony to show that no matter where you at in life, you can always be wherever you want to be and achieve wherever you can be, no matter where you come from. And you is a great, great testimony of what people can be who might be at their lowest point. So again, thank you so much. And again, it's a great day in Mobile, Alabama, because the citizens like you, which make our city better. Thank you.
And Mr. President.
Vice President.
We're happy to be able to celebrate you, Otis, and celebrate with everyone else. Um, Dr. Dent mentioned my name in, in his remarks. And, you know, to some degree, I kind of feel like a proud mama because it was Dr. Dent and Matt Armbruster who reached out to me initially and said, hey, we've got an idea about partnering with the city. Come out and let's talk. So I did. And then I brought the idea for the pilot program to Chief of Staff Barber and to Mayor Stimson. And they took it from there. It has been a wonderful partnership and is growing to provide real jobs, which enables all of the participants to, to get those jobs, get, get those paychecks and pay rent, pay mortgage, all those kinds of things that we are happy to be able to provide for all of the participants. And I'm just happy to see this program growing. I'm happy to see the success that you are having. And everybody that I've met with at Ransom, we picked out trash one day with the group. They are so dedicated to what they are doing. And I've never seen a group of workers work so fast at picking up the litter, picking up the trash piles, and take such pride in, in what they're doing. And we so appreciate that. Thank you again so much.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Ms. Gregory, for bringing them, uh, to us. And so anyway, as the council president says, it's a great day in the city of Mobile. This is not just about building bridges and fixing sidewalks, it's about saving lives also. So thank y'all very much. Um, I yield the floor back to you, Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
A move. Take. They're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? General is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on July the 4th, on Seal Street, June 17th at Melvina Park, and June 10th on Woodside Drive East.
So move. Take. They're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings today is the public hearing to declare the structure at 368 Dunbar Street, a public nuisance, and order it demolished, and also 515 Euclid Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Just open up the public hearing for these particular said items. If anyone present that would like to address the council, you may do so by coming down to the podium, by stating your name. Again, just open up the public hearing for these particular said items. If not, the public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Sharon Arjero.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Arjero, 107 Wesley Avenue, Mobile. On the topic of a drag queen show promoted through the city's electronic media to be held in a city park June 9th, I will begin by asking you a question. Who might favor having a pool of young people learn at events like Art Walk that any and every sexual behavior is normal and acceptable? The answer is the smooth-talking predator who specializes in persuasion. A culture and social environment that desensitizes a vulnerable child to aberrant sexual concepts does half the predator's work for him. These situations can only be described as grooming. In public places such as Art Walk, children are made accessible to men made up in a grotesque caricature of women. Exposing children to drag queens normalizes the fetish and attempts to overcome children's natural resistance to the perverse. The promotion by the city of Mobile of the Agenda of the Human Rights Campaign to groom our children has accelerated since the appointment of two liaisons from the Human Rights Campaign to city government in February 2022. It seems that this was done without the knowledge, advice, or consent of the city council whose members were as shocked as the citizens upon learning of it. What has followed is implementation of the Human Rights Campaign agenda largely using the city parks and recreation department in order to earn points on the municipal equality index of the HRC. On the index, 16 or 17 points have been added in 2022 alone, despite numerous appeals from those in the religious and conservative community not to pursue the HRC agenda. I am here today to let the members of the Mobile City Council know that the people of Mobile do not want this. Yes, a small minority want it, but historically, Mobile has been a city of citizens with a Judeo-Christian ethical foundation who do not want their city government assets used to promote that which undermines the Judeo-Christian ethical foundation they are trying to instill in their children. Of course, such a public event on city property should be canceled. We restrict movies and bars, and at the very least, the posting of warning parental discretion advised signs should be posted at Capitol Square prior to any such event. Until we can get legislation in place to restrict this grooming of children, I'll leave you with Luke 17, 1 through 2 from the Amplified Bible. "And Jesus said to his disciples, Temptations, that is snares, traps set to entice to sin, are sure to come, but woe to him through whom they come. It would be more profitable for him if a millstone were hung around his neck and he were hurled into the sea than that he should cause to sin or be a snare to one of these little ones." Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Pugh, followed by Jacqueline Brown.
Uh, Ms. Brown. It's Mr. Pugh, from Pugh's Nest. Then, then. Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Thank you. I'm Jerry Pugh. I am on staff at Turnerville Baptist Church as the Minister of Music, which is a member of the Mobile Baptist Association. I appreciate, appreciate the prayer that you had to begin the meeting. That was very gratifying to me. And I'd like to tell you just a moment about light. Light is something that's mentioned in the Bible, and we'll talk about that in a moment. Right now, I just want to tell you about the little boy that saw these colors in the sky. Manusfication of that light, it was a rainbow. He asked his dad what that rainbow was about. He said, well, you can remember it by remembering Roy G, Roy G Bill. Red, orange, yellow, um, green, blue, indigo, and violet. So that remembers the colors of rainbow. But to go further into it, that rainbow was merely a manifestation of light. Light, a tremendous thing. It was one of the first creative acts of God. And when he created it, it could go 186,000 miles per second. It's a tremendous thing. And it's a, it's a responsibility for us to be able to share light with those that are around us. The, um, fact that light is just, uh, vibrations is how God created it. And the vibrations include from the red, which is, uh, the, uh, highest vibration down to, uh, blue, oh, blue is the highest. And then you even have things that we can't see. The, the, um, blue is transcended by the, uh, ultraviolet. And the red is, uh, underneath it, it has infrared. These are things we can't see, but there are things that are very much part of light. I conclude by saying that if we are to share the light with our children, we need to be emissaries for what is right and what we believe in our mind is correct to do. And I believe that one way to be a demonstration of that light is to not allow children to be able to witness things that are done that might not be something they can understand, be kind of confusing to them. As they get older, of course, they could go ahead and be a part of that. But let me just conclude by reciting from Genesis, chapter 1, 1 through 4. "In the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth. And the earth was without form and void; and darkness was upon the face of the deep; and the spirit of God moved upon the face of the waters; and God said that there be light."
Thank you.
Uh, let me remind the audience that there should be no undue applause. Again, that's just council rules. Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown.
I am opposed to drag queens speaking or performing.
Ms. Brown.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just brought down your mic and give us your full name, please. Thank you so much.
I am opposed to drag queens speaking or performing in front of minors. Children are to be lovingly guided and directed, not left to form a worldview from their own understanding. When a child wishes to swim in the deep end of the pool without his floaties, we don't allow him to do so and hope he learns to swim. John Adams stated, "Our constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." Based on the fact that our country was founded on the Judeo-Christian morals, I believe it is fair to continue governing with those principles in mind. Scripture states, "A man must not wear women's clothing for God detests anyone who does this." I would request the city of Mobile create an ordinance banning drag queens from performing in any venue where minors could be present. Thank you.
Ms. Brown, just for the record, can you state your full name?
Jacqueline Louise McLean Brown.
All right, thank you so much.
Melissa Gates, followed by Sam Sinclair.
Good morning. Melissa Gates. I live at 1280 Rigby Road. You know what the red letters in the Bible mean? God's holy word? It means it comes straight from God. These were his words. As I read them here in my Bible, Luke 17:2 and 3. "It would be better for them to have been thrown into the sea with a millstone tied around their neck than to cause one of these little ones to stumble." Number 3 says, "So watch yourself." That's very important because if you profess to be a believer of Jesus Christ and you allow these drag queen messes to go on in these city parks where our babies are being exposed to this evil, shame on you. Shame on you. I'm up here because I have a two-and-a-half-year-old grandson, the most precious child to me right now because I have two more on the way. But he is two-and-a-half. His name is Noah. He's learning right now that Mimi is a girl, that Papa is a boy, that Mama is a girl, Daddy is a boy. And by allowing these drag queen shows in these city parks where these babies can be exposed, shame on you. You're approving this. Shame on you. I am one ticked off Mimi. These drag queen shows are pure evil. It confuses our babies and exposes them to very inappropriate behavior. These drag queens and kings as well have a specific agenda to harm our children and destroy families, the families that God intended. I will not sit by idly. Thank you. If that's my, is that my?
You have one more minute.
Oh, I got a minute. Thank you, Jesus. I will not sit by idly. This woke agenda is extremely harmful. And I am for free speech. I am for express yourself any way you want to. I really am. We live in America, and I'm grateful for our freedom. But this mess needs to go on behind closed doors where these children are not exposed. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. God bless you. And look up House 401.
Sam Sinclair, followed by Melissa Alvarez.
My name is Sam Sinclair, and I live at 10708 Southern Oaks Court in Grand Bay. And I'm the pastor of Cloverleaf Baptist Church over on Three Notch Road. I also am here today to express my deep disappointment and strong disapproval of the city's decision to promote a pride parade and a drag show on June 9th. To be clear, the issue I raised today is not the permission of this event by the city, but the promotion of this event by the city. If this merely involved private individuals or private entities hosting a private event, I would not feel compelled to speak. And though private events grieve my righteous soul, they neither pick my pocket nor break my leg. The fact that this is a city-sponsored and city-promoted and taxpayer-funded public event does pick my pocket. It does break my leg in that it is the establishment of religion at the expense of other religion insofar as the LGBTQ agenda is a denomination of the religion of expressive individualism. This event is out of step with the mission of the Parks and Rec Department, which is to bring people together in fun and inclusive ways. Every Parks and Rec event that I've ever been a part of has been family-friendly and inclusive for all who participate. This event is not. For one thing, no reasonable person should conclude that a sexually-charged drag show is family-friendly or child-appropriate. Drag shows involve men portraying sexually stereotyped women. Such portrayals further the harmful objectification of women. They serve to normalize gender confusion, and they turn a serious moral issue into little more than godless entertainment. For this, this event as a whole is offensive to Christians who believe, in good faith, not out of bigotry, that God has made humanity in his own image, male and female. It's an offense to Christians who believe in good faith that homosexuality is sinful in the sight of God according to his holy word. I believe that Jesus Christ died for sinners so that all who repent and believe may be forgiven and accepted in his sight. We believe that all sin, homosexuality not accepted, is an offensive sin that sent Jesus Christ to the cross. Therefore, to celebrate sin is to trivialize the cross of Jesus Christ. The city of Mobile is actively involved in such celebration of sin and is violating the consciences of thousands by actively promoting it. I harbor no personal animus towards those who are gay or lesbian or transgendered. As a Christian, we believe in loving your neighbor as yourself, that all are made in the image of God. But we do believe that the city should not be sponsoring or promoting this event in any way. So we call upon the city and the council to act to disassociate the city from further involvement in this event. Thank you very much. All right, thank you.
I feel like I walked into a hornet's nest this morning. I'm Melissa Alvarez, 8108 Sylvan Way in Theodore. That is District 4. Two weeks ago, I was here advocating for a homeless resource center in Tillman's Corner specifically. First and foremost, I want to thank the mayor and the council for the ransom program. And I'm very proud of you, Otis. Very proud of you. However, there's 3,000 more Otises out there. And there is not enough resources, specifically, again, in Tillman's Corner. If we don't have a building, I'm beginning to think maybe I need to talk to ransom to come out to Tillman's Corner. We have nothing there. We need a resource center in the heart of the problem to get the displaced into programs such as that. Last time I was here, I was approached and told that our district in Tillman's Corner had a resource center, an almost brand-new police station. They have the resources. If the people want it, then they can give them the resources. So I went to Precinct 2, and I approached and asked if someone was to come to you and say, hey, I need help. I need, I need food. I need my driver's license so I can get a job, be a productive citizen. Where would you send them? What would you tell them? He pulled this sheet out of his folder, which is actually an incident report with the listings of such resources. First one on it says homeless. You can count them all on one hand. Actually, minus one. Catholic Service Center, Goodwill Industries, Salvation Army, Waterfront Rescue Mission. That's it. Our Tillman's Corner, that's their resources. What do all four of those places have in common? They're 18 miles away, right here in downtown. If we don't have something for them in Tillman's Corner, how can you expect them to find it? There's plenty of advocates that would be willing to volunteer on a daily in a place like that. Again, if there's nothing there, then what do you expect them to do? Walk 18 miles to the nearest resource center? It's not going to happen. And if you think a homeless person's going to walk into a police station and ask for help, that's not going to work either. And I understand that it's a nuisance and there's a problem. Absolutely. There's drugs, there's alcohol, there's everything. Consider it.
Thank you.
Vicki Howell.
Good day, everyone. This august body, to the mayor and his staff, and to the citizens of Mobile. My name is Vicki Howell, and I reside 1177 Elmira Street. I'm the president of Move Gulf Coast CDC. And Move stands for Making Opportunities Viable for Everyone. And I'm here to announce that five years ago, we had a dream to figure out a way to unite all the many plans of Afri-Town using the Co-Till discovery as a launching point to take the ideas that are written in this plan, to take the ideas that are written in several other plans and pull them together in such a way that we could create economic empowerment for the Afri-Town community. So we went to the community and asked them what they wanted, what they perceived that the needs were based on their own plans. And we developed what we called the Afri-Town International Design Idea Competition. That competition was launched successfully in 2021. And I'm here to report that designs are in, and they are spectacular. They are fabulous. They are something that I think this community will really be, truly be proud of because the level of interest in Afri-Town is so great and so rich that we have an opportunity to really take advantage of the opportunities that have been created by the people themselves and also by the designs that have come in. So what we wanted to say was that we developed the competition as a way to help residents in Afri-Town and those nearby underserved communities harness the power of their own cultural legacy and to uplift their own historic community. So five years ago, we commissioned Renee Camp Rotan of the civic design firm Studio Rotan to help achieve this goal, to make sure that Afri-Town residents and the people who support Afri-Town can interpret and control their own narrative and the huge economic opportunity that's represented by the Co-Till. And so now, Ms. Camp Rotan is our advisor, pulled together her rich resources of architects and designers and historians around the world. And we had a great meeting this past weekend. Well, African-American people and those who are interested in our further economic empowerment came together and chose those designs. And so as a result of that, we're having our first awards ceremony that's going to be just Juneteenth at the Explorium, where we will be giving away $100,000 to the prize winners. But more importantly, we'll be giving a tool to the community that they can use to uplift and empower themselves. And we all, we invite you all, the city council leaders and city leaders, to be a part of this process, to be a part of the transformation, to be a part of the empowerment and improvement, not just of Afri-Town, but the whole city because it's Afri-Town process associated with the rest of the city. And I hope I'll be able to come back next week to give you more information about what's coming next. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for that.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kara.
It was asked that Move provide the PDF and background information for the presentation so that we can send it out.
I emailed that to the city council just this morning, so you have it.
I should have gone to Ashley Flores.
All right, babe, we'll get it to you. I'll make sure I get it to you.
Can we get that so we can send it out? I'd like to make sure it goes out this week and next week. So if you could get that information to us, we can get it out this week and next week as a public.
If I can, one more thing I will do that. Thank you. I want to, I do want to thank our sponsors, the American Institute of Architects and the National Organization Minority Architects, who were the first people who gave the seed funding to this project. We also want to thank the World Monuments Fund for putting Afri-Town as one of its global sites of historical significance and protection. Of course, the fabulous David Carrington of Visit Mobile, who started our vision early on, the 400 years of African-American history, the city of Pritchard for its relentless support, Better Place Foundation of Birmingham, which provided $100,000 that we're going to be presenting, and to the Porch Creek Indians for allowing us to use the Explorium Theater for our presentation.
Thank you. And we did get the email, and it looks fabulous.
Thank you. We do fabulous around here very well. Thank you.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Greetings, Reggie Hill, 107 Sidestreet. There seems to be a lot of confusion as it pertains to city operations and citizen exchanges. The first point of order is in relation to constitutional authority, just as this body, as at the hand of the Mobile County Legislative Delegation, the entire state of Alabama and our sister states are under rule of the United States Constitution. This means that our reported public officials, wherever they might be, cannot and shall not formally conduct themselves in a manner inconsistent and conflicting to the highest laws of the land, so warrantedly symbolized by the United States flag. Any attempt to suppress a citizen's right to petition their government through strategic construction or unjust policy is a direct violation of the U.S. flag. Any attempt to withhold properly-approved funding legislative for serving a public purpose because of deliberate agency and personal discrimination is a direct violation of the U.S. flag. And surely, targeting citizens with illegal traffic citations, supporting and normalizing morally divisive public demonstrations, essentially threatening certain constituents through formal letter and interfering with elections are direct violations to our country's flag. Thus, my request for the removal during these regular 10:30 meetings. Let's revisit these threat letters. Please refrain from using our city seal to conduct this type of negatively consequential madness. It is not only absolutely disrespectful, It is not only absolutely disrespectful, but it is borderline cause for legal action through the respective court of law. Any related material received by this body should be taken with high regard, having the urgency to prevent all like and comparable threatening gestures. Say you just want to send letters from this body? Why not address our state legislator with disdain for passing civil rights infringement laws, bull guarding access to public records and profiling our most vulnerable population as gangsters, making it easy to incarcerate individuals who authoritarians fear because governments of society have shoved poverty down their throats for generations? Those are best uses of our city seal, not pointless threats. The upcoming fiscal year budget is quickly approaching. Success for the future, per usual, um, shall present a data-proven proposal on how we best attend to the public safety crisis which continues to ensue in Mobile, Alabama. Instead of imitating the same work only to yield unsuccessful results, let's break away from insanity this year and support initiatives that actually resolve our collective inconvenience of poor conflict resolution. Expect more on this very matter in the coming days. Thank you for your on the floor.
Thank you.
Fred Rinfrey regarding Resolution 40378.
Dear City Council, my name is Fred Rinfrey, 261 Dolphin Street, Downtown Mobile Alliance. Downtown Mobile Alliance agrees that 650 St. Michael Street is blighted and a public nuisance. However, we humbly request that the council not order it demolished. We think the city's current system for building code enforcement, including demolitions, is fine, but we think downtown's special, hope you think downtown's special, and hope to find ways to address the blight nuisance in other manners. Elizabeth chaired a white paper on how the house stabilization could work. Uh, that may be an option here. Um, but it's our opinion that the best thing for downtown is to not order this house demolished today.
Thank you.
Valerie Dunning regarding Resolution 40378.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm the daughter, Valerie Dunning, 2019 in court, speaking on behalf of my mother, who's trustee and successor of 650 St. Michael Street. I am Rosemary L. Watson residing in the state of North Carolina and I'm unable to attend due to a health condition. My daughter has the authority to represent my interest at the Saturday City Council meeting today concerning the property of 650 St. Michael Street, Mobile, Alabama. On February the 8th, 2023, the city issued a nuisance with the order to have the property demolished. Based on the city notice obtained, a permit to have the property demolished. It was my desire to restore the property, but the cost exceeds the amount of trust available. It is my intent to have the property demolished as directed by the city, using the contractor of my choice. If the city or any other party objects to my decision as successor and trustee of the estate of my father, George Lawrence Little, who is deceased, then please advise and present the alternative proposal for my review and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Runnel.
I don't ordinarily make remarks, uh, during this time, but I wanted to address some of the speakers that came down uh, to speak about Pride Week and drag queens. And I wanted to draw everyone's attention to the laws that are currently, some of the laws that are already in place to protect our citizens from obscenity, those sort of things. And I'm just going to take a minute here just to read a few of them, just to make everybody aware of them. This is all in Section 39 of our municipal code. Um, Section 39112 says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to appear in any public place in a state of nudity or indecent or lewd dress or make an indecent exposure of his person or to perform or commit any indecent act." Going further to Section 39121 definitions, when it defines obscene or obscenity, it says, "A thing is obscene if by contemporary community standards and considered as a whole, its predominant appeal is to prurient interest. As a matter of state and city public policy, obscenity is utterly without redeeming social importance and constitutes a public nuisance which should be abated." And for those who don't know what prurient means, it means having or encouraging an excessive interest in sexual matters. I think folks brought up, you know, vulgarity and pictures and depictions and that sort of thing. There's a law on that currently. Section 39123, where it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to post or leave or cause to be posted or left an obscene or vulgar picture, placard, writing or printed matter about or near any church, dwelling, school, academy, or public street or in any storehouse or public place." Say all this to say that a lot of people have, we all enjoy the First Amendment right. Our country affords this and, you know, we, we should accommodate all people. We're trying to be one Mobile. But we have to do it in a way that is acceptable to the laws that are currently on the books. So with that, Public Safety Director, Director Barber, Mayor, I'd ask that as we go through this event, that we play, pay very close attention to the ongoings of these events to make sure that everyone who participates, both within it and without, follows the laws of the land. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Orders is held over 64028, rezoned property located at 650 Michigan Avenue from R1, R3, and I-1 to I-1.
So moved.
Second.
May proper move a second in the discussion. Call in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. I don't pass.
Consent resolutions held over 40378. Declare the structure at 650 St. Michael Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
So moved.
Second.
May proper move a second in the discussion.
Uh, no, Ms., but, Mr. President, just two couple of statements. Uh, there has been adequate time for the homeowners to go through the proper process. Uh, there've been, uh, there was one 60-day delay, another 30-day delay, and we still haven't gotten there. The city is now in a position to where the back end of the house is, uh, gone further than what needs to. So at this time, uh, there's no other choice but to move forward as the nuisance abatement law states. And let's get the structure, uh, taken care of. So that's where we are, Mr. President. It's unfortunate. It's, uh, one of two properties that are left downtown of this nature. And structure is truly historic, uh, uh, project and could be saved. We've saved other projects in a city like this and other places. But unfortunately, this time, uh, we can't go through that. So, uh, let's move forward as city's law and code states, and let's take the property down.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over 01626, authorized agreement with Derek Hyder to provide record stringer, stringer services for Parks and Recreation Department, 08627, approved purchase order to Catus US for 34 concrete boxes for traffic engineering. 08628, approved purchase order to Temple Inc. for connectivity and support plans for school zone weekends for traffic engineering. 08629, approved purchase order to Dana Safety Supply for upfit of 15 non-patrol Chevrolet Tahoe SUVs. 08630, approved purchase order to Cyber Sport Lincoln for F-150 super crew pickup truck for Mobile Fire and Rescue. 08631, approved purchase order to SHI International for 27 network switches. 09632, transfer funds for Capital Project CFP Broad Street Improvements to Project G Broad PH4. 21633, authorized contract amendment with BFI Way Services doing business as public services of Mobile for recycling, bin rental and hauling. 21634, authorized contract with SPB Associates Inc. doing businesses on industrial for, for the continued implementation of E-Builder for the capital improvement program. 21635, authorized contract with Bagman Russell Electric Company for security camera system upgrades at the Mobile, Alabama Cruise Terminal. 21636, authorized contract with Community Fiber LLC for 36 months of internet service and support. 21637, authorized contract with Goodwill Mills Kaywood LLC for master plan improvements at the Mobile Civic Center. 21638, authorized contract with Folker Inc. for design and engineering of Broad Street Base 4. 25639, accept the deed for easement from the Mobile Infirmary Association to provide construction for the Trail for the Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail, Segment 7.
So moved.
Second.
May proper move a second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 27642 through 6647.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
May proper move a second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
27642, resolution given notice of election of municipal officers in District Six on July 25th, 2023. 40643 and 644 are declaring the structures at 368 Dunbar Street, 515 Uker Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 60645, 646, and 647 are determining appropriations to LB Williamson High School, opportunity for entertainers in performing arts. The Mobile Museum of Art serve a public purpose and approving payment.
So moved.
Second.
May proper move a second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced, 08648 through 6655.
By council rules, these resolutions will lay over for one week.
Announcements, Mr. President. Um, I would like to announce that today is the first day for qualifying for District Six and the final day to qualify to run for District Six, uh, council seat is June the 20th.
Uh, District One, Councilman Finn?
No announcements.
Uh, District Two, Councilman Carroll?
Uh, no announcements, Mr. President.
District Four, Councilman Runnel?
No announcements.
District Five, Councilman Dave?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I believe as everyone knows, today, June 6th, is the 79th anniversary of the E-Day invasion. And, and, uh, the, the actions of the soldiers and sailors that participated in, in the attack on Normandy that day is unbelievably heroic. All you have to do is go over there and look at, uh, the site where that occurred to understand that. Uh, and, and I think we owe them all a great debt of gratitude, just as we owe everybody, uh, all the men and women who, over our 240-year history, have put their lives on the line to preserve the freedom we all enjoy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Councilman Dave. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
No announcements today, thank you.
Uh, and to the citizens of District Three, on last Thursday was another great day in the, uh, district. Uh, special thanks to the mayor and administration, also to Ashley for coming out on last, uh, Thursday, to the residents and to the citizens, uh, who came out to, uh, celebrate the last completion of Ann Street inside of District Three. Uh, was a long time coming, but, uh, great things happened to those who wait and for District Three residents and the Mazeville and Old Death community. We waited a long time. But last Thursday was a great opportunity for us to celebrate for the completion of, uh, Ann Street in the District Three side. Again, I'd like to thank everyone who had their hands in it to make that a great success. Anything else from this council?
Uh, is that the director of the Housing Board up there, Michael Pierce? Hey, thanks for joining us today, Mike. Any good news coming from the Housing Board lately? Any good news coming? Be glad to hear about it. Sounds great.
Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.